You do that every week?
Yeah.
All right, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for April 14th of 2014. Please rise and say the pledge of allegiance with us.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Reich. Mr. Huckkey. Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsythe.
Here.
Okay, let the record show, we do have a quorum present and we may officially conduct business. First order of business being the approval or correction to the March 24, 2014 regular Village Board meeting minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Hack to approve the minutes as presented, seconded by...
Second.
We'll put you there. By trustee Callahan. He doesn't know where Jerry's going in the next business. He always pays the bills. All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the bills are paid. Now, trustees, we have the bills in your packet for the payroll for the pay period ending March 29th of 2014 in the amount of $43,249.77. The accounts payable in the general fund, we have bills totaling $57,671.14. And we've got two categories of bills from a water fund, one for $658, the other for[208.26][208.26]$33,666.66. A total for all those bills in the accounts payable is $91,995.80. Now, technically, these bills are covered by the operating budget that we are coming to later, so I want to entertain a motion to approve the bills pursuant to approval of the budget later in the meeting.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee...
Second.
Callahan, to approve the bills pursuant to approval of the budget later in the meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the bills are paid pursuant to the budget approval later. Public comment and/or questions? We have everybody from the public who is not on the agenda. Norine, come on, tell... What's going on at the library?
It's National Library Week. We have some special programs going on. For example, Friday Biscuit, Children's Literature Character will be at the library at 1:00.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, we're going to move on to the reports of committees. Trustees, you will find in your packet the clerk collector monthly and annual report along with the treasurer report. And if there are no questions on that, we'll move down the agenda to the next item, which is the police chief report. Chief, anything to report?
Just a couple of minutes of your time. I never need a microphone. Hopefully not. Just wanted to bring it to the attention I brought up at the last board meeting. I'd be giving the board a quick summary of our crime reporting. So I have a document with you. It talks about our arrest categories, people arrested by certain offense types. You'll see that there are people that have cannabis and drug paraphernalia that get arrested, the alcohol and the drunks get arrested, and people that don't have a driver's license get arrested because nobody has a license anymore. And a lot of the other offenses that we've totaled and arrested people. Last year, we had about 260, no, 206 people arrested for a variety of offenses that came through our community. We had 68 administrative toes, we had 52 traffic accidents. A lot of the accidents happened around Route 50, Wilmington Road and Route 50, Route 50 and Corning, Route 50 and Main, Route 50 and Beecher Road. I mean, that's where people... We also have Peatone Wilmington and Oriole. They somehow can't separate out there by McDonald's. They can't stay apart from each other. They just want to hit each other. So they're about even up, I mean, as you go around the community, three or four or five in certain areas. Route 50, the whole stretch of there, people just aren't looking both ways at the wrong time or at the proper times. In that, you see calls generated when people call the police or we are called for a certain series of calls. The officers generate a lot of the stuff, the business checks from their mobile computers in their squads, actually are aware of the fee structure is with our dispatch center. We only get charged for the calls that are generated by the dispatch center. So anything the officers do with their laptops in their squads actually saves us dollars in the long run. So in the next page is our crime reporting. The state has not released the Crime in Illinois Report where they do comparisons, but I gave you in the top the 2012 totals and the 2013 totals. You will see that the biggest, some of the ones you see are theft reports that can be people leaving their cars unlocked, things getting taken out of it. The year 2013, we had 32 of those. Previous year, we had 54. We hope that the public continues to lock their cars even though they think, in Peatone, you don't need to do that. And you'll see that our cannabis violations, as previously mentioned, you know, people having any cannabis, we report the arrests. So that's kind of near the conclusion of my report. And I would say that, you know, you see a lot of drugs and alcohol events that we arrest people for. And I will leave for board members and anybody else that wanted. I happen to read an interesting article in Time Magazine. And I did print it out and people later on will link them to the archives of Time because it really talks about what the problems of today's people are and the young people. And I would wholeheartedly give our scout leader part of the article on this, on the synthetic drugs, because that is the wave of the future. We monitor any place that spells tobacco and we do not have any tobacco sales that covers this, but we do watch for it. But as you will see in the article, I'll pass out at the conclusion, this is the rise, take cocaine, take heroin, take marijuana, the synthetic drugs, K2, spice, whatever you want to call it, is at the rise. And it is what is making and hurting our young people. And it's cheaper than legalized marijuana. You know, people out in California or all the places are spending $200 or $300 an ounce for weed and they get chemical synthetic drugs for about $15 an ounce. Now, economics will tell you what they'll take. And the problem is, the foreign countries' chemists are beating the DEA because they keep changing the compound. And as they change it, you know, law enforcement can't keep up with what's illegal that they're putting on this stuff. And it has a tendency just to make your brain scramble eggs taking it. So anyway, I didn't want to say anymore, but I happened to read this and I, you know, it's a scary reality. So I'll leave it here for any board members who want to read it and...
Would you give one to the library director, Norine, please?
I will.
Oh, you got one?
Yes, he gave me the... Thank you.
So it is a strong concern. And the problem is prosecution of these people, possessing and selling it is very difficult because it's, you know, it's hard to determine what's legal and what's not legal. The article really clearly points out, this stuff taken legally or that's not limited by DEA yet, this will scramble their brains. And the young people are using it when they, whether it's bath salts, incense, or whatever they call this stuff, it is a problem and it will not go away. It is a big industry. And it kind of says in the article, forget cocaine, heroin rise, all this, this stuff is killing youth just as quick as everybody. So I saw it's a reality of the real world and, you know, even though we all live in Peatone, we have to be realistic of the real world because our young people will get a hold of this stuff. It may not be sold in Peatone because it's sold in a lot of other places. So that's really all I have for the board. So thank you.
Trustees, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the engineer's report. Troy, any updates on anything?
No, nothing new.
Okay. From there, we're going to move on to old business, which is the Bond Infrastructure Grant Scope of Work. George, you want to go over that?
The general consensus of the board appears to be directed to a bike path sidewalk along Wilmington Road. Robinson and staff have reviewed several scenarios. The village has freed $50,000 in the FY14 budget for this project. Combined with the $100,000 in grant funds, the village has a total of $150,000 available. The only way to bring the project into budget is modifications to the original scope. Modifications can be in design, length, or both. The width of the path is rated a cost impact of drainage and right-of-way issues. Moving the terminal point from Oriole Drive to Golview Drive provides sidewalk access to and through the subdivision, Golview subdivision. The last leg on Wilmington Road from Golview Drive to Oriole Drive contains unique right-of-way drainage and clearance issues. You have four scenarios before you, which include eight-foot asphalt from Rath J to Oriole, which was the original plan, with an estimated cost of $209,000. The eight-foot asphalt bike path from Rath J to Golview Drive, an estimated $140,000. Five-foot sidewalk from Rath J to Oriole at $173,000. And five-foot sidewalk Rath J to Golview Drive at $126,000. These costs do not include the purchase of any required right-of-way or unanticipated signage from the county highway department. It appears the most cost-efficient scope of work for this grant appears to be a sidewalk from Rath J to Golview Drive. This option has a maximum allowance for reserve should right-of-way or signage costs increase. At this point in time, staff simply needs to know which design and scope are to be submitted. In other words, it starts here, ends here, and it's going to be a five-foot sidewalk, an eight-foot bike path. We're having internal conversations, which we'll bring to the board, about north side of the road, south side of the road, because each have unique pluses and minuses. Mr. Gollum, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Oh, just kind of like you said, there's still details that need to be worked out, preliminary engineering, before we decide on what the best route to go is. The bike path poses some obstacles because the clear zone needs to be three feet as opposed to sidewalk is not as strict as that when there's power poles or a fire hydrant. So there's just some different things we have to look, you know, take a look and get an idea what the best area to do it.
There is a, in the bike plan that's being developed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the abandoned right-of-way is being designated as a future bike path. That could be the eight-foot asphalt for recreation. I think if I understood the board correctly, our primary concern here is safety of pedestrian traffic from point A to point B. And the five-foot sidewalk would accommodate that as well as take it to Golview, which has, I think all but one lot has internal sidewalks.
Asphalt has a much higher maintenance cost than concrete, correct?
It won't last as long.
When you, when you're in Gol Landings or to the south of McDonald's, there's an empty lot there. Is there, there's no sidewalk?
That's the empty lot I was referring to.
That's the one lot without a sidewalk? Okay.
But them being on Teal Street is a lot different than being on Rath J Road.
It's a start.
Right.
I think that a sidewalk to Golview Drive is a good start and that'd be a good place for us to start.
I think the $126,000 option is the way to go, being if we don't, as long as we don't have to incur massive fees to the county and signs.
Okay, I'm going to toss my two cents in on this one. While that is economically a bit less expensive, the, going to Oriole Drive, I think, completes the path because the odds our kids are going to go to McDonald's. If you haven't been out there to kind of just stand and look at, if you were to run a sidewalk or a path, all the obstacles you run into, you can't appreciate it until you do that because we have a lot of dips and other things around there that make the bike paths more costly and also help this to be a little bit more costly, too. I would suggest that perhaps the five-foot to, from Rath J to Oriole might be the better course because instead of just being a step one, it completes the whole idea. And will be us if we only go so far and there's a problem that occurs in safety because kids take the shortest path to get where they want.
Can we approve the $140,000 option and scale it back to the $126,000 option if we need to, if other fees incur? Our main goal is to stay under $150,000, correct?
Yes, it is.
So is that possible or no?
The, I mean, I think the question, the first question is, how tight does the grant phraseology need to be? I mean, we budgeted $150,000 and that's all we have, quite candidly. We budgeted $150,000. As Troy from Robinson Engineering pointed out, an eight-foot gets into more complications relative to right-of-way, relative to drainage in particular, or among both sides of the street, and relative to proximity to the curb of Wilmington Road and the light poles that are there. And it just gets, it's easier from Rath J to Golview and it gets really, really tough from Golview to Oriole.
The sidewalk still, you know, completes our main agenda. Get safely moved, so sidewalk's the way to go.
If we were to build a sidewalk only to Gol Landings and then later add to that, is there additional construction cost because we're doing it as a part two?
Yeah. It just, because, you know, any job that's, bigger job being bad, you're going to get better prices. Smaller jobs are going to come in higher. And that would be pretty small.
Is that something we can add to our sidewalk program?
Well, again, that was my point. It's something we could add later.
We've got a sidewalk program anyways. We can just add it to it if we have to.
We could add that to our annual sidewalk program or that could be our sidewalk program at some point in time in the future.
Could be one of your...
Or maybe do the empty lot and the other side at the same time?
Assuming everything gets approved and, I mean, we're ready to start, how long would it take for that stretch of land? I mean, is this a couple of months, a couple of weeks, a year? How long would it take to put a sidewalk in that whole way?
It depends. On our part, doing the topography and engineering for a sidewalk like this wouldn't take too long, a month or two. But we have to also remember, Will County is going to need to review this and we have to, you know, come out of their review schedule and see what kind of comments they have. And then, I'm not sure if you're planning on it, but if you use any MFT dollars, IDOT would have to review it as well.
No, this is general fine dollars.
I thought if, for engineering or...
No, this is, American Collection is this is general fund and Corning Avenue is coming out of MFT.
Okay, yeah, it's kind of dependent on Will County, but you would think something like this, we could probably get done within this summer.
Okay, that quick. The reason I was asking is I was wondering if it may extend into another budget year where we could tap into next year's funds as a part of the project, but it doesn't sound like it.
Well, and there's also probably a time limit on when the grant funds are available.
Right.
We do, we probably have a, it's typically a year, typically a year to get it completed.
Okay. All right, we need a motion, don't we?
George.
I'm sorry.
I thought you were talking for Michael.
Yes, we do. We need to, we need to...
A motion is to which of these options? A motion would be appropriate.
All right, so I'll entertain a motion. Tell me which of those options you choose to go.
And this is just for further inquiry or this is...
This is, we're going to, this is going to be stated in the grant because we have to get that turned in.
Yeah.
If we commit to the 173, are we, can we scale it back later if necessary?
We've budgeted $150,000.
That's what I mean.
I would say based on our budget, I would put a motion forward for the $126,000 project.
Just to get it started. Okay.
I would like to do the 173, but if you don't have money, you don't have money.
Okay. Motion by trustee Forsythe to go with a five-foot sidewalk, $126,000 cost estimate, seconded by trustee Hack. Clerk, please call the roll.
Was it Callahan or Forsythe?
I did. Didn't I say Forsythe?
You may have, and I missed it.
Sometimes I do. It's okay to remind me.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the infrastructure grant scope will be the five-foot sidewalk Rath J Road to Golview Landing with a cost estimate of $126,000. All right, we'll move on down the agenda to special event permits. The first one being a request from the American Legion Post to conduct the annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 26.
We have a letter from Gary Clausen, Commander Peatone American Legion Post 392. Dear board members, the American Legion Post 392 is requesting permission to have a parade on Monday, May 26, 2014 in honor of Memorial Day. The parade will start off in front of the American Legion Post at 10:00 a.m. and will proceed south on Second, east on Main, south on Third, east on Corning, crossing Route 50 and ending at the Peatone Cemetery.
The usual route.
Same thing.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve the special event permit request of the Peatone American Legion for the Memorial Day Parade as outlined on May 26, 2014, beginning at 10:00 a.m. at the American Legion Post Hall. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and approval given to that special event permit. The next item has to do with the special event request from the Peatone High School for the Peatone High School Devil Dash 5K Run Walk on May 17th of 2014.
The board has a letter from Adam Rusick, Director of Bands, Peatone High School. Dear members of the Peatone Village Board, please find enclosed at the special event permit application route for the proposed 2014 Peatone High School Devil Dash 5K Run Walk. This route will be the same as used in last year's event. The music and physical education departments both appreciate your discussion and hopeful approval of our event. The event is scheduled for May 17th. It starts and ends, it starts and ends at 604 West North. The time of the event is 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. You have a route, a map would be a closed route.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Forsythe, seconded by trustee Wicker to approve the special event permit application from the Peatone High School to run the Peatone High School Devil Dash 5K Run on May 17th, 2014. The route shown from 8:00 a.m. till 12:00 p.m. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
And Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and that permit is approved. Next one is a special event request from the American Cancer Society, the Relay for Life event, and the amplifier permit. And if I recall, we have to do each separately? Or can we do them jointly, Michael?
You can do them jointly.
Okay. So go ahead, George.
Yeah, this is, you have a permit application from American...
We have a representative here.
Oh, do we?
Yes.
It's me.
Please come on and, are you, am I right?
No, I am Heather.
Okay.
I'm Heather Imanis. I am one of the co-chairpersons of the Relay for Life this year for the Peatone Beecher Moni. And we're seeking two things. One for just the amplifier permit for the July 25th Relay for Life. And then also permission to canvas the village on May 3rd at Area Businesses. Our hope in this is two things, to raise more awareness for the Relay for Life, to bring out more people, to get more teams involved, and then also to raise additional funds for the Relay for Life.
Okay, what I'm going to do is I'm going to take trustee's yearly questions, seeing as we've done this for a long time. What I'm going to do is entertain a motion to, first of all, take care of the Relay for Life event itself with the special event permit approval and the amplifier permit approval. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve the special event permit application for the Relay for Life, July 25, 26, 4:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m., and the amplifier permit as noted. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, that one is granted. Now we're going to move on to the next one, which was a request for permission to canvas the village, as was pointed out, on dollars for relay for May 3rd of 2014. And that is going to be, oh, there it is. Yeah, I know, I'm looking for the times. Basically, it's going to be First Midwest Bank, Burkut, Shell Gas Station, Casey's Phillips. That's not Phillips anymore. It's BP. So we'll call it BP.
Can we add one to it? Can we add the post office?
Sure. The post office is understood. Does everybody always catch you at the post office? All right.
Do you have times in mind or are no times in your letter?
You know, we had said like 8 to 1.
Okay. Which is typical, Saturday morning. All right, is there a motion to grant the request to canvas the village at the sites designated? Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Hack, seconded by trustee Forsythe to approve the request to canvas the village at the sites mentioned on Saturday, May 3rd, from 8 to 1 p.m. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Wicker?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Motion carries. We got both of them, all three of them.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you write a letter saying that you approve that when I call these businesses and ask them, or how does that work?
Usually you've asked the businesses before you've come here.
I'm doing it the opposite way. I'm just going to say that it was approved at tonight's board meeting and would it be okay? And if it's not okay, it's not okay.
If they need copies of our minutes, they can, they can come to us.
If they need it, typically, most of the merchants in town and everybody, it's kind of, yeah, we've done this before, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda has to do with a business registration. Jerry, you wanna talk about it? You're going out on your own.
Yes, I am. Currently at two fourteen North, Second Street is Misty's here on Second, owned by Misty Pearlman, and, uh, her daughter's graduating high school this year, and they'll be moving to Washington State. So, she was looking to sell her business, and it just seemed the right place at the right time, so.
Good.
Uh, Misty and I have struck a deal, and as of, um, about May fourteenth, she'll be finished there, and as of May fifteenth, it will be Professional Hair Designs.
The official name of the, the business?
Yes.
Good. And we, we welcome you to the Downtown Business Association.
Thank you.
Is the trustees, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by, who, Trustee Forsythe, to approve the application for business registration of Professional Hair Designs.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good luck. Wish you well on that. Next item has to do with the liquor license renewals, it's that time of year. Trustees, you have in your packet, and I don't have to say these out loud, do I?
Uh, because there's not much detail on the agenda, it'd be preferable if you read them.
Okay, the, uh, every year, we, we review and approve the liquor licenses for the establishments in the community, and so, um, the liquor licenses, where everybody has filed all the necessary paperwork to meet the requirements, are Burkitt Superfoods a Class D license, Casey's General Store a Class D one license, Max Circle K, number one eighty-two, a Class D one license, Peatone American Legion a Class A license, Peatone Bowl a Class A license, RC Services a Class D one license, Speedway, number seven zero three two, a D one license, Suzie's Saloon Incorporated a Class A license, Throwback Two a Class A license, Tony's Pizza of Peatone a Class C one license, and the Will County Fair Association a Class A license. Do I have a motion to approve these liquor license as enumerated?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by Trustee Forsythe to approve the liquor licenses so outlined. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and those licenses are officially renewed for another year. Next, we get to our operating budget. George?
Um, first of all, I thank all the department heads, and particularly our Treasurer, Marcy Hammond, for generating this budget, being instrumental in generating this budget. Um, it's a challenging year, but I think we've got most of the things we wanted to get done. There's always a little bit more, but this is an overview. We present the draft fiscal year 2014-15 operating budget. The budget is the product of input from department heads, administrative staff, board committees, um, and conforms to the Long Range Capital Improvement Program. While the attached memo from Village Treasurer Hammond provides an overview of fund balances established by the budget, I'd like to address some, but by no means all of the projects funded by the budget. In the general fund or administration, we have operating expenses and rebates for economic development incentives. In the police department, we have operating expenses, two replacement squad cars, speed computers in squad cars and offices, purchased tasers, weapons, East Comm funding for the communications budget, remodel the evidence room. Building Department, funding for downtown development plan, funding for commercial zoning plan, comprehensive plan update, I Q grant, which is in, um, the tail end of that. Funding for code enforcement, funding for building plan review and inspection. Under streets and alleys, we have operating expenses, tree trimming removal related to ash borer, replace two damaged street lights downtown, mosquito abatement, Wilmington Road path sidewalk, transfer to vehicle service fund, leaf collection and snow removal, phase two of street sign replacements and upgrades, repairs, repairs to the department work area. We have paving projects, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight, with an additional fifty thousand from the general fund. Total paving project this year is two hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Fiscal year fourteen is the third year in a row for major street paving projects. We normally do one every other year, so we're either one up or two up in the last three years. Okay? Repair of East Corning Avenue Bridge, repair Conrad Street Culvert, lease new dump trucks, snowplow, which is a shared cost for water and sewer department. New economic development, we continue the Buxton marketing study, we have funding for the business expo, and we have a downtown pilot program. Water fuel tax fund, remaining payables on Rathay Road project and engineering for Route Fifty, Corning Avenue traffic light, uh, which is a grant. Water Department, pardon me, which is other water and sewer fund. Operating expenses, update the water atlas, wellhouse repairs, replace old hydrants, continue meter replacement program, um, we got some painting of hydrants, install storage connections on hydrants, pull well if needed, a transfer to vehicle service fund, payment to the two thousand nine water main project. Uh, I think this is our last year or next-to-last year on that. Sewer department operating expenses, Route Fifty grout, manhole repairs, funding for amendment to facility planning area, install blower shelter, infill at lift station upgrade, clarify our repairs, and transfer to vehicle service fund. Capital improvement, these projects are not listed in previous comments. Note, this fund's sole revenue stream is the development fees collected with new residential and commercial building permits. We have mill improvements, land acquisition for a well or tower if necessary, Peatone Welcome Sign, computers if necessary, copy machine if necessary, phase one village hall remodel, wastewater treatment plant, blower building, wastewater treatment plant grit chamber, emergency generator for Wilmington Road lift station. As per the attached memo from Treasurer Hammond, the general fund shows a projected year-end balance of five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Water sewer fund is predicted to have a year-end balance of seven thousand, one hundred and thirty, one hundred and thirty dollars. Historically, the village estimates expenses high and revenues low, therefore, final year-end balances are usually higher than projections. Some line items are included in the budget just in the event of, uh, something unexpected occurs. There's movement at the state legislature to capture more and more funding streams distributed by the state to local governments. These streams include income tax, sales tax, water fuel tax, and others. Most of these funding sources have been in place for decades. This movement is essentially the state trying to use village funds to balance the state budget. It is too soon to know which, if any of these recaptured funds may pass. Similar proposals could impact the village for hundreds of thousands of dollars. Future actions by the state could cause substantial changes to the general fund operations. Uh, the reaction requested is adoption of fiscal year 2014-15 operating budget, which will then be used to do the appropriations ordinance to be approved at a later meeting.
Trustees, we've been discussing most of these over the last several months, uh, via committee and via our review of the capital plans. Do you have any questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year, fiscal year, not physical, fiscal year 2014-15 operating budget.
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by Trustee.
Second.
Callahan. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, the operating budget for 2014-15 is hereby adopted. Next item is the follow-up to what we talked about, uh, the previous meeting concerning the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System Agreement. George, you wanna say any more about that?
Certainly. ILEUS, which is the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System, is a statewide mutual aid network of local county and state law enforcement agencies. Village has been a member of ILEUS mutual aid network for several years. ILEUS has determined its existing agreements are stale and should be updated and renewed. Reposed agreement contains no material changes from the existing agreement.
Okay, this would be Resolution fourteen dash R zero one. A resolution authorizing the execution of a law enforcement mutual aid agreement in the existence and formation of the Illinois Law Enforcement Alarm System by intergovernmental cooperation. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution fourteen dash R zero one?
So moved.
Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by.
Second.
Trustee Hack to approve Resolution fourteen dash R zero one. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wick?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and once again, that resolution is adopted. We move on to, actually, we've pretty much finished most of the items on the agenda. Uh, we have need to go into a closed executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, and, uh, it, there is no action anticipated after this executive session outside of adjourning the meeting. Do I have a motion to go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Hack, seconded by Trustee Forsythe to go into a executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Mr. Forsythe?